To occasionally conduct rural events, specifically weddings, fundraisers, big events at the site. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have, we, as everyone knows, we're actually pretty far to the end of this application, but the, the law enabling this requires that there be two points of entry and exit. One for emergencies and the proposed second entry and exit that would be going through a state park also goes through another individual's land, and apparently that has not been agreed upon. So we had a letter from Ms. Van Tyle, the applicant's attorney, requesting that we adjourn the hearing, hearing until October 17th. First, is there any comments from the public about this application? Any comments from consultants to the board?
No.
So make it a motion to adjourn the public hearing to October 17th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is continue public hearing for Asahi Shuza Saki. This is located at five St. Andrews Road. Locals will know it as the home of the former Stop &amp; Shop. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Our architect is caught in traffic and should be here in two minutes. Can we just adjourn till the next matter and go back?
We can, we can. Yes, yes, no, it's okay. I'm sorry, I looked up, I just realized there are only two of you. Make it a motion to adjourn this to later in this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is continue public hearing for Real Ole Football Club Soccer. Applicants are seeking site plan and special use permit approval to convert a former golf driving range and mini golf course into what I'll call a basically soccer club, but that at this stage is only really soccer fields contained within the netting. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And let me do some shuffling of my paperwork. Okay, Nicole, Patrick, do you want to take it on over from here?
All right. Good evening. Did you want us to do a brief kind of overview?
Overview of the changes that have occurred since the last meeting? That's the thing you need to do.
Okay, so we received some of the comments from the town engineer and we addressed those basically by adding the chart that was requested that kind of showed the phases of, of the proposed plan. Phase one was kind of broken down into...
Component parts.
Yes, so there's many different components of phase one with the understanding that when we go to phases two and three, which are the larger buildings at the bottom, we will return for a separate site plan approval. We did some digging into the irrigation well and some background information on that, and we have added a note that a maximum rate of 10 gallons per minute from the well would be the maximum. So that note is now on the plan. So there, I believe that there's no issue from the town engineer on the irrigation well.
I can confirm that I spoke to him today.
Okay.
He'll be writing that up formally, but he had no issues.
We also submitted some cut sheets for the proposed benches and playground area, so something, either those or something very similar to that. And I think that was it. We spoke with Chuck Walter, who, from the DOT, who was away this week. He didn't feel that there was any real comment in that he was going to be ready to issue his secret response, but just did not get to it before he was gone, so I hope to hear from that.
It was a courtesy referral. They're not, you're not proposing anything that requires a DOT permit.
Okay.
We just wanted them to know that there might be a difference based on traffic to see if they wanted to weigh in. As I said, it's a state highway. They didn't think so. In addition, I'll just point out that we also had a response from the Department of Health.
Yes.
And the wording in it was a little bit confusing to me. The second point was based on Article 19 of the Texas County Sanitary Code and our change in use concept. A New York State licensed professional engineer will have to evaluate proposed wastewater needs and obtain approval using appropriate design and construction standards based on the proposed building use modifications. Apparently what this means is that because the small retail, or not retail, but where the clubhouse was, is going to no longer be allowed for public use. So I just want to make sure that there's some note from the engineer saying that it's not going to be allowed for public use because the use isn't really changing. The building is not changing. It's just, so at any rate, Tad actually thought that maybe that, that they were saying no porta potties, but that apparently is not the case.
No, no.
So I think we're all satisfied on that. Just so that everyone knows, we circulated for this, for lead agency on July 20th. Since it's only August 15th, DEC and DOT still have time to weigh in, which is why we couldn't take action tonight. I wanted to make the point that Pete said that he was fine with your analysis for the irrigation. Liz may have something to add to that. I also want to state again for the record that the existing special use permit for the site is for a non, is for non-motorized commercial recreation, which this still falls into. There's still no new signage proposed as part of the package, so we're just understanding that that will need its own separate permit when you come back.
Yep.
And a correction from the last public hearing, I may have misspoken. I haven't reviewed the minutes yet, but one of the neighbors asked if there was going to be regrading in a certain area, and either I said no or minimally. I want to make sure I need to go on the record that it's minimal. There will be some regrading there. This is where the rock is a level up, but it's not a huge amount. I just want to make, state on the record that if I misspoke, I apologize. There will be some minor regrading in that area. So let me start over to the left. Ms. Axelson, any new comments?
So, no new comments. I just note that Pete and I went through, I guess there was a response letter to Pete's emailed comments and then Michael's emailed comments, and Pete was satisfied with everything. And I took a quick look at the plans, they look good. The only thing I did notice is there are some places on the plan where the font is so tiny and fuzzy that it's not readable. And I put my eyeglasses on. I mean, I'm old, but, so that's just something, if you can straighten that out, somebody years down the road will know what it says. That's it.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, welcome.
Sorry. I agree.
Traffic, yes. There was quite a bit of traffic.
By the way, it's nice to see you without your physical apparatus. You're healed.
Every day.
Thank you. Patrick, are you here to speak or not speak, merely to observe?
I'm not here to speak.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let me start to my right. Ms. Denaple, any additional comments?
No comments.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
No comment. Just again, we're really thrilled that you chose Hyde Park.
Thank you. Then would someone in the public like to speak about this application? Come on up. If you could just guys make way for her.
John Green, two Idlewild Drive. I, I did like what Mr. Oliver said at the last meeting, that for the irrigation, I would hope that maybe they would look at shallow point or whatever that well is called to gather all the surface water and they could store that in the tanks to, I mean, I want to see this project go, okay? But as I said before, since 2009, it's been one, one thing or another that we've, we've been here, okay? Not that we're tired of looking at you, Michael, but the other, the other thing that was mentioned too, and when I moved into the neighborhood a little while ago, quite a while ago, the school was down there. And I bought my home based on kids making noise and, you know, when I was on the county council in the city of Poughkeepsie, I'd thought about this stuff when people came. And, and, and the thing is, if I buy a place and there's existing environment, then I got to live with that environment. This is different. I'm in my place. I've got the environment of the school down there, kids making noise. But don't say, well, you know, you got the kids down there and, you know, ba, 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 ba. I mean, think about that when you're, when you're looking at a project. It's, if, if I moved in and, and the kids were down there, I have no right to complain about the noise. I chose that. But when I'm in my house or you're in your house and another project comes by that can amplify any other noise, then you got to take that in, in consideration. The other thing on the plans I noticed was in the playground. And the playground got, it, it does have lights and they're low, okay? And they're going to stay. But there's also a comment there that Monday through Thursday, I think, or Sunday through Thursday, it's going to be open till nine, and then Friday and Saturday night, it's going to be open to 11:00. And I understood that, you know, when somebody's coming to play soccer, they're going to bring their kid. One kid may want to go in the playground while the other kid's being instructed, and that's fine. But who's going to do instruction at night on the ball field at 11 o'clock at night? What is the playground going to be used for till 11 o'clock at night?
I'm going to let the applicant answer that when they're back up, but I believe, I believe that the answer would be more when they're having the tournaments in case they run late. Remember, there's, there's a dual purpose here. There's some that's just instruction, and there's also going to be tournaments occasionally where you'll have different age groups. I believe it was several different age groups competing with one another.
Right, but there's no, but there's no lights on the soccer field, correct?
There are downlights that will fade, there are downlights on the soccer field? There are lights, sorry, they're conversing. There are lights presently at the site, no?
No.
The main building? Right, but that, that, that lighting is still going to stay there. It's, it's not being removed. But there's no lighting on the soccer field itself, no.
Right, so at 10 o'clock at night, it's dark. So from Friday night and Saturday night, why is the playground open till 11 o'clock?
I'll let the answer, I'll let the applicants answer that when they're back up.
The other thing, and I don't know if you can answer this, Mr. Chairman, but I, I know there's a list. I think I've heard a list about restrictions for that property. I think one of the things was like the go-kart track that they were going to put there. I think originally the golf driving range was supposed to have lights with, on 60-foot poles. I don't know if that's on that restricted list, okay? I don't know what's contained with that restricted list. But what I like to see, I'd like to see that airsoft get put on that list.
We can look up that before the next meeting. That list did not specify no lighting on the poles, although that was originally proposed. We decided it would be too much because it was 60 feet tall. It'd be a nuisance to the neighbors. With the list, the restrictions are on what could be non-commercialized recreation. So I believe we, just from memory, I know we specified that there could not be like vending machi- what do they used to call them? Penball machines, something like that. There couldn't be, video games, there you go, sorry, it's not pinball anymore. I really am showing my age. We didn't want to have a video game or machine arcade. There are a bunch of things we wanted to make sure that weren't in there, that, that didn't seem to be the kind of recreation you would have in this area, particularly with the buildings. So you could have had some area to go into to do things like that. I can get the list though, because that's in the special use permit. But it did not specify no lights and...
I'd like to see air, airsoft added to that list.
Fortunately, I believe that the airsoft issue has faded, thank God, from, it's no longer popular, obviously, because it's gone away. But if, if the board would like to revisit that at your request, then we will. And when it comes to noise, I do want to say that I sometimes justify, because it's the same kind of noise that you would have kids to kids. But we really do think about this too. It's like being on the county council when people come up. What I like to think of it as is, what is the other use that would be allowed there as of right? In other words, it doesn't matter who lives in there, but what could they do as of right? And that's subdivided with single-family homes. The only area that's really developable on this site is pretty much where they've located this area because the rest is all wet. So I believe we worked it out that they would probably be able to get in 21 homes. And so I've been trying to evaluate the balancing of, and I think everybody's been doing this, is what would the sound of 21 homes be, the kind of sounds you hear from there? That would be just added to the ambience, leaf blowers, occasional lawn mowers, kids playing, parties, whatever. And think about that in terms of what kind of sound this emanates. Because there, you're right, anytime there's new development, there's going to be new impacts. You're going to have changes, and one of those usually is noise. If you buy next to where there's nothing now, but it's zoned for a restaurant, and a restaurant indeed is open, indeed opens, we're going to look at ways to mitigate the impacts there because we're required to. And since no one expects that, unless they have the restaurant, if it's just zoned commercial, it could be like a Sally's Dress Shop that never generates any sound at all. Instead, it's going to be maybe a restaurant with a bar that goes until 11 o'clock at night. We do look at those, we would try to provide screening, you know, something to mitigate the sound. In this case, if this were residential, there would be no requirement for any kind of noise reduction impacts because it's as of right. And so I'm thinking that the occasional use of this on weekends during the summer, weekdays during the summer for instruction, weekends for occasional tournaments, how would that balance out with the fact that if you had 12 months of the year sound, because this is going to be limited to seasonal use only, what would the impacts be? And just to me, on balance, I feel as though it's not going to be hugely burdensome because it's a similar sound to what you hear during the school year. And again, you're going to be hearing it more often, but you're not going to hear it on a daily basis.
I, I understand a lot. The big building, where the apartments used to be in?
Yes.
Okay. I think the plan here says that maybe a retail store, storage for, I would suspect it's for lawn mowers and et cetera, and there would be a, an apartment there.
There's already an existing apartment up on the top floor.
Is that, is that going to happen right away or do they have to come back to the board?
No, they'd have to come back to the board because there's presently, the only use, well, they would be able to use it for the uses that are described in here as part of the approval. So they could ultimately have someone there selling soccer clothing, balls, whatever other equipment is used. You can tell them that a soccer person, sorry. And they could, so there could be retail, but ultimately, I think it's, someone's going to live up there. Is it you? That's what I thought, Mr. Alvarez is going to live on site.
Oh, that's good. That's good. I know where that place is.
And it's sometimes, it's a better control mechanism to have the owner there because this is what we tell people up here a lot. The best neighbors talk to one another instead of getting the town involved in a dispute. And I think you'll find that Mr. Alvarez is going to be a good neighbor. I hope you will. I hope you'll both be good neighbors to one another because I know for me, I had a neighbor for a while whose sons she was, she moved in, had a very quiet neighbor. She went in, she had two sons who suddenly beer bottles were being thrown over the fence when they were, you know, having fun at night. I thought, okay, I could call the police or I can just go over and talk to Pamela myself. And no more beer bottles, because it was better just to approach the neighbor myself. But there was that temptation in me to go, ah, go to control and call the cops immediately. So if there's, if there's an issue, always call, call, let Tad know. But I think the best approach first is to contact Mr. Alvarez himself if there's real problems.
All right, I, I just hope that they would consider the shallow or point well or whatever that is. And also hear a little dissertation about the playground in 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, we're going to have them answer that question when they come on up. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I think that's all because Mr. Green's the only person here besides applicants. John's here. Thank you. Come back up. And do you want to answer his question about the length of, the first length of hours in the shallow point well?
Yes, the length of hours, I think that he was referring to was actually part of the mini golf approval site plan. It's not on our current plan. It's actually part of the resolution that a revision to the site plan containing no lights at the mini golf area shall be turned off by 10:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 PM Friday through Saturday. So not part of this.
I didn't think so.
I mean, they will remain, but they won't be on...
I was just thinking that if you have a tournament, I, these are kids. I can't imagine they're going to go till really, really late.
Right.
But I know that there's also, there's also a time to allow dispersal of all the individuals around, so you can't say, oh, we're cutting it off at a certain time every night, because it takes a while to get, kids bundled up when they're being kids.
Right, I, we don't plan to have, on another note, those lights are not like, they're for the mini golf.
Right.
So it's for putting, it's not really meant for playtime. So it wouldn't be safe for them to be out there at that time at dark anyways. But they won't be there probably no later than eight, latest if we were to have a tournament.
Thank you.
It's more meant for the, because we do have an older men's team. So when everybody, we're done coaching the kids, we can play at 8:00 to 9:00 and then we're done.
What is older men qualify as?
I still like to play. Oh, you know, the men's league, so.
It's still young. It's still young.
That's okay.
But yeah, there wouldn't be there anything for the kids.
Hand me my false teeth now.
It's all relative.
Hand me my false teeth now. I didn't think you meant really old guys. Yeah, okay.
There's some, there's some. They still can, they still can hack it.
Okay.
Well, maybe John will come and join you.
That would be, that would be good.
He could be the team captain.
And can you address the type of well you're using?
Yeah, there's something I wanted to, I mean, the work that we researched, which came in the report and submission to you guys, talked about developing a 10 GPM well. That works fine for their irrigation, but we're only going, we're only going to go as deep as necessary. So if we achieve that at 60 feet, then that's a shallow, shallow draw well, and we're going to stop there. We're not going to go any further. Anything in the area says that, you know, as we put in there is 120 to 160 feet, something like that. It's...
You're very close, you're much closer where you are to all the existing wetlands.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're, we're less deep than any of the surrounding wells personally.
Because if you were further toward Idlewild, you would not have that same kind of water basin all around you.
Right, and even looking back at our old subdivision that we designed, Woodcrest, we had a mixture, but we had wells in and around 100, 120, I think, but they were yielding, there was 30, 40 GPM, so there was some high-yield wells in there.
There's a lot of water, at least up on your site.
Yeah.
And I know the water doesn't flow necessarily toward Idlewild anymore. That was corrected.
Yeah.
But a lot of the water also flows a different direction anyway.
Right.
Okay. Is there being another public comment? Any other comment from the board?
I got a comment.
Yep.
And I, I would imagine those high-yielding wells, you didn't hit that water at 130 feet. I, you probably just went a little deeper for some reserve.
Yeah, I, we looked at those, the ones we had, the test wells from Woodcrest, and I think there were four or five of them. Yeah, they were, it was maybe like 160, I don't remember the exact number, but we were just, we saw the yield and we're, it just further confirmed that we don't think we need to do anything like those. We never had an instance where we had low-yield wells, and there doesn't seem to have been any historically in the neighborhood either, so, yeah, we're only going to where we need to go, and that's it.
As I said, our engineering consultant reviewed what you, the material you submitted and seemed satisfied as well. That's who we rely on for things like this, so thank you. Then make it a motion to adjourn this.
Well, so moved.
Hold on. So we're going to have Salt Point Solar. They're not appearing tonight because we are still waiting for AKRF to respond with the, the review of their environmental survey for bats.
You were talking about perhaps combining...
And so, yes, the question would be, if, if we adjourn this to September 5th, then it's adjourned.
Yep.
I was wondering if maybe we could consider a special meeting after the 20th so that we could maybe get you through?
Yeah, we're obviously open to that. We'd like to have that.
And the issue really would be, so, okay, so everyone's nodding. Would it be possible for us to look at our calendars now, so to speak, mental calendars in my case, to see if there's a free date before, between the 20th and the 5th? Do we set up a special meeting one afternoon?
Were you hoping that Salt Point Solar was going to be worked out with the decommissioning plan and the title of the town?
They didn't respond to, yeah, they didn't respond to me on that one. Then we should just let it be for this, we can adjourn it for this one instead alone.
Ah, I see. So that one will not...
Because they still have, they still have to meet those conditions anyways. It wouldn't make much difference.
Right.
If they, I asked, I wrote to them today.
If that was the only outstanding item.
Then it'd be different.
Right.
But it's not. So, but in this case, that's all we're waiting on is just one secret response and I...
Correct.
We don't really know if it, well, too technically.
And they have to respond by August 21st?
August 20th. August 20th would be 30 days.
Okay, so anytime after the 20th?
21st through, so anybody free in an afternoon in that time period? Want to shoot out some dates for us?
It's all time dependent for me. I could, you know, if we want to do 6 o'clock a week from tonight, I could.
I can't.
Uh, next Tuesday, I can't.
But you can usually find quorum during the day.
I could, well, we have to set it now, that's the problem. 28, 29?
Are we on the week of the 20th?
That's what I was hoping for.
28, I'm on.
I can do the 23rd.
Yes.
Anybody free the 23rd of Thursday?
Yep.
Should be fine. 6:00 PM?
Sure.
We have quorum already.
Oh.
Okay.
You don't want me to come?
Yes. It's just, I'd rather it occur that week.
So what day did we decide?
23rd at 6:00.
Thursday 23rd at 6:00. And we can notice a special meeting? So make it a motion to adjourn this public hearing to Thursday, August 23rd at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. So we're going to try to get this through, and we may have more comments. And John, remember, that's hard for me not to say the mister. We'll take a look at this, the prior special use permit resolution so we can see what restrictions were put in there at the time, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And now may I get a motion to reopen the public hearing on Asahi Shuza Saki?
So moved, I mean, yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you for your forbearance and letting us linger a little bit longer. Have a chair.
So just what we're setting up for plans, let's get it quick.
Can you please make sure that you're speaking into the microphone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You can bring, you can slide in to make it comfortable.
I'm here tonight with Matthew Messenger from Chasin, and we have Mark McDonnell and Dave Kuhn from Pelley Clark Pelley, also in support of Asahi Shuza site plan application to repurpose the existing supermarket at five St. Andrews Road for Asaki Brewery with tasting room, as well as some ancillary structures of the brewery use. We submitted some revised plans and a comment response memo responding to the comments received from the seeker circulation. That included DOT, Department of Health, DEC, Department of County Planning, as well as your consultants and this board's comments from the July 18th meeting. Just to highlight some of the changes that we've made in response to the comments. We've relocated the wastewater treatment plant to the north, which I think is a pretty significant request that this board has made, and we're happy to have appeased that request. We've also added several patios extending the Ngawa both on the southern and western facade of the building to break up the facade, provide some sort of architectural elements with seating and an extension of the Ngawa, and also some additional landscaping. And I guess lastly, just as, we've documented that with a turning radius diagram that charter buses can circulate through the parking lot. We have gone through, I think as you're aware, some, some value engineering exercise with this project, and I think we've done a pretty, pretty impressive job of focusing that, those changes on the interior, and the outside remains mostly unchanged. We have changed some materials and we have a material, some example material boards to present to the board tonight. I just want to have a caveat that those materials are subject to change with respect to color and some details, and we hope to have those absolutely finalized for your September 5th meeting. But these should be a close approximation of what we're talking about, just so we're all, you know, on the same page. I guess one other thing I'll just note is, we, so as I alluded to, we hope to return on September 5th. At that meeting, in addition to, to the final materials, because we relocated the wastewater treatment plant, it wasn't initially part of our program to have it in this location. We've had to rego, we have had to revisit the site and take new soil samples, and the final, final location of the wastewater treatment plant in this new location cannot be finalized until the soil samples are, are analyzed. So we hope to return on September 5th with the final location of the wastewater treatment plant. This is essentially where it's going to go, shown on the plans, but, and as I think you're aware, we require a area variance because we're within 100 feet of the existing stream back there. And so we will be requesting a positive recommendation to the zoning board for that area variance. Obviously, what the extent of that variance is going to be is going to be dependent on some of the soil testing. Also on September 5th, we will be requesting a recommendation with respect to sign, another area variance for the signs. So we've, if you missed it from the plans, we've actually removed two of the signs, so we no longer exceed the cumulative square foot requirement. We removed the freestanding sign on Route 9, as well as the wall sign on the Rice Polishing Building. So now we have a sign at the corner, a sign on St. Andrews, and a sign on the main brewery building. Both the freestanding signs are going to acquire area variances for exceeding the maximum graphic and letter. Both the freestanding signs are gonna require area variances for exceeding the maximum graphic and letter. Also, the wall mounted sign is going to exceed the maximum dimension, as well as the maximum area. So we will be returning, and with the positive recommendation for the wastewater treatment plant, we'll be requesting a positive recommendation for those signs as well. So I think with that somewhat lengthy kind of summary, I turn it over to Pelley Clark Pelley to show you some of the, the recent changes, namely, the extension of the Ngawa, as well as some of the materials.
Before we leave that, let me just add first, for the record, because I didn't have a chance to memorialize it, that Monday morning, you, Victoria, myself, and Mr. Zaren had a telephone conference. At that, that discussion, we went over a lot of this. In addition, we explained that they, the applicants will need to apply to us to relax the graphic, the maximum size of 10 inches for graphic symbol or letter, because for the ZBA to grant the minimum variance required, we must take action first, using our discretionary powers under Article 24, so that it's one inch for every 20 feet you're setback from the primary roadway. Again, because you have two front yards, I suggest you use the primary roadway that's the farthest away, that gives you the most advantage, so you could get more increases. We can increase it to 24 inches. So that's one issue. The second would be that at the September 5th meeting, we're likely looking for, potentially to do a neck deck. We have all our seeker responses by that point. And I just want to say that I think you may hear from some board members, because I've been bombarded, so to speak, with, why did they take the red sign off the rice polishing building? I think it's, I said to each one, I think it's because this lowers their need for another variance to go beyond all the maximum square footage allowed for every sign. But from what I could tell, most of the board up here really seemed to like it, so you may.
Are you talking about the, the sign that was on the face of the rice polishing building? We can certainly take that back.
We called it the Prada, the Prada sign. It's what it looked like to some of us.
It looked like the Prada stripe on clothing.
We can certainly take that back to Japan. I think that that sign was removed for two reasons. Number one, a notion about value engineering and just reducing the number of signs to save some money. And I, I think that in Japan, they were also under the impression that that would, would possibly lead to a faster, more positive result with the ZBA. And if that's not necessarily the case, we can, we can ask them to bring it back.
I'll let you hear from this. If it involves them saving that much money, then of course, I myself don't care if you put it on there or not. I'd rather see the project happen and save the applicant costs. So. But I think you may hear that from some of the members. It was just a sort of a heads up real quickly there.
Okay.
Let me turn it back over to you now.
Well, thank you. I'm Dave Kuhn, and this is Mark McDonald. Thanks for having us back. I think the, the first thing that we should talk about tonight is the enhancements and the changes that we've made to the landscape design. We've been working closely with JMA in Japan and Reed Hildebrand, the landscape architect, over the last month or so. And what we've been looking at is ways to enhance the landscape design on both the south facing and the west facing facades of the main brewery building. Basically, what we've done, and I've got some cards to pass around, some visual stuff. What Reed Hildebrand is, their design now, what they're suggesting is a series, these dark green bands are a series of relatively low, four-foot-high hedge rows. Like U, Y-E-W-U.
That's what it's like, that's what it's like.
That run along the length of the west facing, and then there's a few that poke up over here on the south facing. They have also added some dedicated seating areas, patio, public seating areas, that are outside of the covered Ngawa space. And they have taken the patio seating area and extended it approximately 60 feet in the easterly direction down the southern facade. Also, interestingly, it's, it's kind of a small detail, but we, we quite like it. They took the sidewalk that was running right alongside the parking lot, like you would see in any shopping center, and they moved it about 10 feet in and separated the sidewalk from a birch tree thicket. So there's a birch tree thicket that runs along the length of the, of the property here, and there's a birch tree thicket that runs here, screening the parking lot from the south facing wall. And these are some images to pass down that came from Reed Hildebrand. This is the, the hedge row, and these are the birch tree thickets.
Why, yes, these are not U's.
They're hexi, is the, is the word that I saw.
These are boxwoods. A U is also hemlock.
Yeah.
You see Canadian hemlock trees around. That U is, the hemlock is a really big.
Yeah.
It's what kills Socrates, it makes poison as well. But these are, these are boxwoods. These would not be hemlocks, because the leaf on a boxwood is small and round, and it's a needle on a hemlock. They're small, little green needles. They're, they're both evergreen.
Yeah, that, that picture is taken from a project that Reed Hildebrand is doing up in North, North Adams, Massachusetts, at a hotel. And then those two pictures are from the, the museum in North Adams. I'm blanking on the name right now, but the Clark, the Clark, not Massmoka, but the Clark.
Yes.
So that's the, that's the, that's the story with the landscape design. We've changed the sidewalk a little bit here to bend around towards the rice polishing building. We've made it a little bit more convenient for the bus parking people to discharge off of the tour buses. They've connected the patio area directly to.
Drop-off area.
Drop-off. So that people can get off the bus and come straight into the building. With regards to the material, are there any questions about the landscape, or do you want to wait until the end?
Well, just one. It's, this is, so I believe that this is in response to our request with the section of code that calls for if it's greater than 100 feet wide, or linear feet, that the building be articulated, et cetera, because we discussed last time, basically, maybe using green walls, quote unquote. One of the things that's been hard for us, and it's, Chazen isn't really doing these plans, we're aware, it's, there's multiple agencies involved. We're used to seeing elevations that would show, if this is an integral part now of the elevation, which it appears to be, we're used to seeing elevations that would show what it would look like with the landscaping integrated with the building. And we don't have those here. All we could see was the top-down or aerial view on the illustrative, illustrative site, site plan.
Sure.
So I think it would help the board to be able to, I see you're taking, all taking notes on that one. But it would help the board evaluate whether that section of the.
Yeah.
The code, the required code, is being met by these proposed changes. In addition, the very cover, this illustration hasn't changed.
Yep.
And the building has, so if you're not.
We, we've asked to have that updated. That will be updated.
If you're not gonna have it updated, just drop it. Just, because it's confusing to us when we keep saying, well, that's the building on the very first page, but we know that it's changed radically in this case. In addition, I, I didn't have time to do a site by, plan by plan review, but because of the turning radius, it appears that some of the parking in through here may have been reduced. Am I wrong? Is it still the same numbers as proposed last? I don't remember there being.
Well, what, a slight change that we made is that we moved the handicap parking spaces from this location over to here, so that they would be a little bit more convenient to the employee entrance.
Okay.
So this is a little bit reconfigured, and there are a few, actually, I think probably one more standard parking space here, because the.
The width.
Yeah.
In addition, Ms. Axelson has commented that there's more parking than what's required, but I want to state again for the record, as I did last time, there's, there is a lot of parking, but I also know from our conversation with Mr. Zaren, I can say this now, the CEO, Sakurai San, would like to have, with the town participating, meaning members of the public as well, some kind of groundbreaking in mid or late November, which presumably, and I'll go through a schedule for us in a little bit, how that could happen. Not to actually, I mean, they won't have met the conditions. They won't be earthmoving, but something ceremonial. And it was made very clear that he would like to have the town involved. I mean, like, a lot of people there.
Yes.
So it seems to be the ethos of this company or of the individual, the family behind it, that they want to be real town citizens on this. And so while I normally hate to see so much asphalt, you're reducing the overall amount of asphalt substantially right now.
Yeah.
And I love the addition of the green space. I liked it when it was lawn. I like it better now as patios and green walls, where it becomes an outdoor, true, like all landscaping, it becomes really outdoor rooms to invite you and beckon you out there. Particularly, maybe they can, I don't know what the liquor laws are, but if you could taste your, your sake outside, it seems like it'd be a nice experience to me.
I think that's the hope and the intention.
That's what I thought. So, but I, in other words, I don't feel, feel as though a lot of times, these spaces will be utilized by the public so much as these are. But I think that during overflow times, particularly with, with members of the public who reside here, they'll know to get around, or get around, I mean, to go around here and figure out how to get out of this, and then to go out. Primarily, this is the employee parking, and that's who's gonna be utilizing this for the most part, so this could be thought of as overflow. And you've added landscaping, I believe, in through here.
Yes.
You're removing the trees to put in, I think it was ginkgos, up in through here.
That, that's correct. There's, and then there's the thicket that runs here.
There's the thicket that runs all along here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I feel like that's something that, that at least for myself, I haven't been clear enough over these months of coming up here. And that is that, that all of these places where you see the light green dots, those are thickets of birch trees that will look like that photo I just sent down the line.
So in other words, we're gonna have a lot of protective screening.
Yes.
Where cars would maybe be, for once, we're not gonna have to, I mean, again, our code is that all parking be behind the front building line. That is now the front building. All parking is behind the line. Let me go on the record there. You met the code. But, you know, sort of strategically, the idea that we're leaving some of this, at one, you know, at some point, I could see saying, no, let's get rid of it, all of it. But we don't want to do that, because they're going to have events, you know, at various times here. And I think we want to be able to have our residents park safely, even though it's a first come, first served basis, and it's a big town in 22,000. You can accommodate everybody, but there are other parking, there are other ancillary parking areas people could walk to from here, so. At any rate, I just wanted to get that in the record. And I like, I like the fact that you have these hedges. Like I said, to me, I think the Ngawa is supposed to be where the in and the outer meet, but you've now added.
That's correct.
Sort of outer, outer Ngawa, so to speak, where you have even outdoor spaces.
Yeah, I mean, people will really be inhabiting this, this slot of space here now, where they weren't before. And we also have added a gravel band along the edge of the Ngawa paving as well. Sure, sure. I mean, we, we do have drawings that are in the set that illustrate the turning, both Chazen and Reed Hildebrand have done drawings that show how the buses will move and how the turning radius.
We watched them, we watched them. Don't worry. We looked at them. They were better than the turning radii you first supplied, which is, just showed arrows, not the actual vehicles and how they'd have to maneuver. It appears to me as though some changes were made right in through here as well.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you for reminding me. We widened the landscape here. We took this, we took this entrance exit lane here and slid it over slightly, about 10 feet or so, I think. So there's more planting and screening along this edge, and it was also done to improve the turning radii of the, the tour buses coming in, making, making the whole circulation easier and clearer.
That was a win for both sides, because we got more landscaping, and you have a safer turnaround for your.
That's right. Yeah.
So, okay, anything else you want to highlight, Mr. Kuhn? I interrupted you, I apologize.
Uh. Well, I, I think that Ted just mentioned that the wastewater treatment plant has moved over to this location.
And that also now involves some, some change of the materials. It'll be painted, what I believe, instead of the more expensive, I'm guessing, charred wood?
Yeah, the, the drawings indicate that although the design is still kind of in flux in terms of its height and its exact location, the wastewater treatment plant is intended to look a lot like the rice polishing building.
Yes. In other words, last time we had the charred wood exterior and no roof. Now there's a peaked roof on it.
Right. There's a peaked roof made out of metal, and I'll show you the material. And there is the black painted wood that will, it will be clad in. The only thing that's slightly different is, and you'll see it on the elevations, and again, it's, it's very much in development, is there's a number of overhead rolling doors that are on this facade to be able to get the tanks and the water treatment equipment in and out. Right, right, right. We got the soils report, I think, today or yesterday, and that will tell us how far down into the ground we can go. And we'll have to weigh the cost of going down into the ground versus how tall the building wants to be.
Sure. And I'll be asking each person, each member of the board, as they speak tonight or offer comments, to weigh in on whether we should be recommended positively on an area variance or not, both for signage, as well as for the wastewater treatment plant incursion into the stream buffer, or stream corridor, I should say. I myself am gonna go ahead and weigh in and say, I like this location a lot better. If it can save you some money by relocating it north in terms of materials, and it also blocks it completely from view. And it was that if you, as you, as all visitors drove in, they would have seen it automatically. Now, you're not gonna really notice it. You're gonna be looking at, I think, all of this, no distractions whatsoever from there. And there's no way that you'll be seeing it from this way either, so. Anyway.
Win-win.
Yes, we think so. Materials?
Materials. We, we showed up with some materials. Do you think it would be most appropriate if I just sort of described them and then passed them down?
Sure. Or raise it up?
Yeah, just.
Or just hold it up? Yeah, I mean, I could tip it up a little bit, but only a little bit. We, we didn't fasten it down. Starting with the, the rice polishing building, the rice polishing building will be a, a combination of the, the black painted wood. The, unfortunately, through value engineering, the, like, authentic Japanese charred wood, which was about $30 a square foot, has been, has been value engineered to, to black painted wood. But we'll, we'll make it as nice as we can.
You know, that's really a euphemism.
What's that?
Value engineering.
Yeah, I hate it. I despise it.
Being the architect, which you are.
I despise it. And just a tiny short story, in the United States versus Japan, we have a very, we have a very different way of doing value engineering in the United States, where we try and take a, take a slice of space out of the building, or we try and change big things that have big dollar values. In Japan, what they want is a list of 100 items, each one of which is worth $5,000. They want as many value engineering items as possible. And it's really been a struggle for us to, I mean, I, I've been doing it for years, but it's always a struggle. And unfortunately, we'll probably go through it again after DeeDee's, but these are materials we love, and we will defend them. This is cement plasterboard. It will be painted off-white. It is the material that will be above the black wood on the rice polishing building. And it's also, the, the color will also match the color, we're, we're suggesting that it match the color of the main brewery building as well.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
On the man-made engineered wood piece?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. There are other man-made products where they look like cedar wood.
Mm-hmm.
Would that get you closer to what your original plan was? Is that of, though it would be more expensive?
For the, I'm sorry, for.
For the rice building?
For the, for the black wood.
The black. Still do a black, but, you know, where it has some texture to it.
We'll, I, we'll look at it. We'll look at it. I, you know, I, I think it's still a work in progress, because I think that, that Mark and I feel that, that just, you know, what this is, is a pine board painted black. And I think that it would be nice if, if the wood did have a little bit of texture to it. And, you know, a little bit of depth to the color.
Especially with it being black. I mean, a textured board that, that's, that looks like cedar, something like.
Yeah.
It would give you some substance, get you a little bit closer.
It's possible to sandblast this, but, so the figure would come out a little bit more, but each square foot, if you do that.
It still costs.
The price comes up. And the kinds of materials you're talking about, fiberglass, for example, is probably not the way we would want to go, which does give you a figure and a texture, but it's fiberglass, so.
I, I think the place where we're gonna start with Japan is to advocate that they possibly consider spending a little bit more money on the rice polishing building, and then maybe leaving this for the wastewater treatment building.
Yes.
You know, you put the money up front, you know?
You heard six yeses. You heard six yeses.
The, this is lead coated copper, which the, the downspouts and gutters will be made out of this. And this is also kind of a beginning representation of the metal roofing, which will be gray in color.
This is for the rice building?
Rice polishing building and wastewater treatment building and the Ngawa roof.
That's the Ngawa roof we made out of copper?
Lead coated copper.
Lead coated copper?
Or, or paint, I'm sorry, it's painted metal.
That's what, okay.
This is the flashing, for flashing gutters and spouts. It wears extremely well. It's basically the life of the building.
It's not actually lead though, right? It's zinc?
It's lead coated copper.
It's lead.
Don't lick it.
Thank you. So, moving to the Ngawa, the, the beams and columns at the Ngawa and the underside of the roof, the. And, yeah, the column, column cladding, beam cladding, and the underside of the roof will be solid doug fir. Right now, this is Douglas fir, solid wood. And the, the decorative wood wall, which is on the back of the Ngawa, attached to the face of the brewery building, will be wood that is stained to match Douglas fir. They're ending up with Stewart. The Ngawa paving is still a work in progress. We have two, two options that we're working on. One is a decorative concrete paver and another is a washed concrete, flatwork concrete sidewalk so that the aggregate is exposed.
Do you guys have a preference?
Yeah, definitely.
Is there a price difference between the two?
Yes, definitely. It, it, I think that what we would prefer is the, the concrete paver. And with that, the, the challenge is picking something nice that, that we can afford. Because there's, there's a range. The, the concrete flatwork that's washed is what it is. Yeah, they come in, actually, this is from Reed Hildebrandt. The, there's a, some examples of both the washed concrete aggregate and the, the concrete pavers that they were thinking of. So it's a geometric pattern. It's modern.
The reason why I ask if you had a preference is I've seen both in different, particularly in the city, industrial spaces tend to have those.
Have you seen it done well?
Well.
I mean, I guess I shouldn't say that, but Mark has far more experience. I've never, I've never.
You mean without cracking? A lot of cracking?
Yeah, I've never done that. So I don't have any experience with.
I have seen it done well. The places I've seen it done the best, for whatever reason, are in California. I don't know. Yes. Wait, microphone? Why is this? Can you use the microphone for us?
He worked in LA.
Yeah, we did a lot of schools with the, that kind of exposed aggregate concrete. It's, was good for tooth. You're less likely to slip on it, slip and fall. But it wears hard. And I think in the Northeast, it was problematic. Freezing thaw was problematic.
That's what I wondered, because like I said, the place I've seen it mostly is Southern California, where they have pretty much uniform weather all the year, despite their recent heat.
Hot and hotter. And, and, yes. And it was used frequently. But I've seldom seen it in the Northeast.
Well, that's, that's why I asked, because I don't see this very often. I just got back from a trip to LA and I saw it out, the exterior and courtyards of some of the museums had this as well. And it's really attractive there because maybe they have the right conditions.
Yeah, LA County Museum, I think I might use that.
Yes, that's where I was. Thank you.
Another stone you might want to take a look at is, it's called Fair Stone. I don't know if you've heard of it.
I haven't heard of it. How's, is it F-A-I-R?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's imported from India.
Okay.
It's like a, almost like a marble granite type stone. I mean, it comes in all types of.
Sizes and.
Sizes, textures, everything. But it's, it's really nice. You should take a look at it.
Is it affordable?
It is. It's more affordable.
We'll definitely look at it. I, you know, our first choice, of course, would be real stone.
That may not pass value engineering test.
Well, there's a, there's a lot of it, right? On the face of the actual brewery building, when you get to the entrances, as you know, there's a curtain wall there. The glass we've selected is Viracon VE185 for, for the record. And it is, we, we use Viracon wherever we can. It's a very, very good glass company out of Wisconsin or Minnesota. And what we've selected, it's a glass that we're using more and more for institutional projects because it, it's low E-coated, so it's very high performing. But the, the reflectivity and the, the green color is, is as low as we can find it for these types of products, without going to low iron glass, which is out of our budget. But that's a long way of saying that we've selected a glass that, you know, we're going for low reflectivity, low green, high performance.
Would you also need or consider putting a film on the glass?
Our belief is, at the present moment, our belief is, we don't need to do anything to the glass with films or frit patterns or shading devices to lower solar, solar heat gain because of the Ngawa and because of all the landscaping, the trees that are in front of the building to the west.
And filming never looks good over time.
No.
It really doesn't.
The only way that we know how to do it and make it last is to put it between laminated sheets. You know, you laminate it between two pieces of glass. And there's not really a, a need to do that here. The, the curtain wall system storefront is also, the, the vertical and horizontal mullions are, are painted metal, aluminum, painted aluminum. And right now, the color, the color has not been selected, but they are thinking a dark brown, like a bronze type color.
Actually, that's in, that's in A 301, 302. It actually says possibly bronze or something like that. I just remembered.
Yeah, I, I picked that up from an interiors drawing that they sent to us. But they haven't sent us the final color yet. The, the decking, the decking at the stage, Reed Hildebrandt has picked a wood called Akoya. It's Akoya wood. And there's a visual to go along with that.
This is for the stage?
Stage, stage platform surface. There's a, there's a thought now, and our drawings show this, so I guess it's more than a thought, that the, the, the stage would be lowered from 18 inches above grade to down to nearly grade level. And that would obviate the need for a ramp and a cane guard and extra circulation around it. As you know, the, all of the metal lettering and symbols that are on the signs and on the main brewery building and hopefully the rice polishing building will be stainless steel lettering. And all of the other, the handrails, the door handles, all of the sort of miscellaneous metals around the project will be steel. They'll either be galvanized or stainless steel. Bike racks as well. So, that's what we have.
I appreciate you, this presentation. Anybody have any questions with the applicants?
Comments?
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 Just on materials right now. Any comments on materials?
Just on materials. Yes, you made the comment about maybe saving some money, taking it from the back location for the wastewater and putting on the front rice polishing?
Specifically having to do with the charred wood, but yes.
Oh, specific. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. What I was specifically saying is that, that, that Mark and I could go back and, and at least take a shot at advocating that they do painted black wood as a cladding for the wastewater treatment building and do something a little bit more, it's got a little bit more tooth to it for the.
More punch for the front rice polishing.
For the rice polishing building, yes.
From the beginning, I've, that's the first thing you're going to see.
That's right.
And to me, it's, yes, it's a Japanese modern, but I think people would look at it and kind of question, what's that? Until they understand what the whole unit is there. So I, you know, there's different, if there was something to be done to make it a little bit more of an identifier, you know, I know they want to keep it modern, you know, having Japanese roof designs, they like to tilt at the corners, keep spirits of bad spirits away. Are they different? Cornices on the roofs are nice little end pieces on it.
I think that, you know, it, admittedly, it's a little bit abstract, but I think that that's what they're trying to do when they, they bring the charred wood up to a peak on the two ends of the building. Picking up the angles of the roof with the charred wood.
And by the way, Mr. Coon, when you argue for using the charred wood in the front, you should have that, that slight tone of disdain in your voice when you said painted pine. You made it sound as though it was just a pine coffin, plains. I don't think anybody wants, yeah, I don't think anybody wants to present to the community in that way, to be honest with you. If you really want to be a community partner, painted pine, it sounds pretty pathetic, actually. Sorry.
I'll never be a politician.
Throw some of that value engineering. There's got to be another layer that you could reference.
At any rate, I think that's, that's probably it for the changes that you're proposing. Signage has been changed as well. Again, you guys need to go and calculate. I might as well just say it again because Victoria's not here, so she can't yell at me. But this should be, you should use this as your calculation for your primary roadway. You have two front lawns under our code. In addition, this actually is your primary access roadway now. You do not have an entrance on Route 9, so to me, it makes more sense to evaluate all the signage from here. As I said, we can go up to 24 inches, no more.
I think even going from either.
Microphone, please?
Oh, yes.
From Route 9, we're at 300, just over 340 feet. And so at 20, at one inch per every 20 feet.
We're going to get, you're going to get that somewhere anyway.
We're going to be at 24 inches either way. So it really doesn't matter. But it's a good point, though. Thank you.
I was actually thinking also of the, it looks like it might be the same, but I was thinking of the Prada strip on the chicken co-op. If you're going to calculate from there, it might be, this is a little, oops, I turned it off. I can't, I'm not good with judging distances anymore, but this looks like it might be a little bit further than this. That's all.
It is.
It is, yeah.
So if that gets added back, then you might be able to get that to an appropriate size. But that's actually, there's not much on there for us to have to now to think about it. It's not really anything we would have to do. It's not a letter, it's not a symbol. I'm sure, I'm not sure how Ms. Moss is going to treat that, if that's just one big symbol.
It's a graphic.
It's a graphic. So that's how she would look at it then. Yeah, because she has to measure out basically like a geometric figure around whatever it is, and that's just a geometric figure.
I was talking to her about how if it's not connected, then each one has its own dimension.
Yes. So you've been doing a good job following through this.
Yes, very interesting.
Well, I'll be honest with you. We hate signs. Not because we don't like people's signs, it's just, it's really complicated.
Yeah.
Ted is an armchair architect.
I, yeah, I take full credit for.
He's got a drawing table in his office.
Thank you. I believe it might be Mr. Mitsui's design originally, if I'm, if I'm recalling correctly. Okay, so let me start with our consultant. One present tonight. Ms. Axelson?
I'm going to be a, yeah, I'm going to be both of us. Pete couldn't be here. A lot of my comments are going to end up being technical. There, a lot of progress was made in terms of, you know, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. But I still have some technical issues with lighting, landscaping, zoning table, that kind of stuff. I'm not going to bore the board with that. There, there is a discussion item I'd like to get to in a minute, but I want to just get clear. I was looking to hear what the board had to say tonight, finish my review, and then issue comments after that. But then I heard something about another submittal? Or was I misunderstanding?
Well, yeah, we will be submitting revised plans for the September 5 meeting. They will have some additional details on the wastewater treatment plant and some additional details with respect to signage. We shouldn't, we're not anticipating any other changes for, you know, lighting or landscaping, but really just for those two.
So it's really just for signage and the wastewater treatment plant?
And we have to bring this back.
And, and the materials will be.
We have to bring back the final, final materials board. And I think we're, we're going to redo the, the front cover rendering anyways. That's already been ordered.
Thank you.
That's already been ordered from Japan. And you asked us to do some illustrated elevations, so we'll come back with those.
That's really the most important thing.
These things that you're discussing, so, because I didn't want to be at cross purposes and do, write a review memo if you're going to change the plans that much. Let me work on what, what you need to know about.
I think you said this is a placeholder right now. It's not really determined exactly where it's going to go based on soils. So that's why this would have to be revised. I will add that, before I let or have Liz continue, we discussed sort of a timeline at our Monday meeting, our Monday morning telephone conference, part of which was if we did the neck deck, considered a neck deck, which Liz has already filled out a part two for us. Everyone's been sent, everybody, if you have any comments on that, let me know. But it's pretty straightforward. I, myself would say that there's an overall positive impact on aesthetic resources because of what you're doing and proposing here. But we discussed maybe doing the neck deck on the 5th. During the public hearing tonight, possibly to October, because we don't have to open and continue a public hearing each time just to do some business, you see the whopping amount of the public we have coming out to speak. So I think most people, and I hear, I'm bet you, I'm betting that everybody hears this. We go to the grocery store, people start asking about the Saki project. They all seem to be very much in favor of it. So I think that the public's sort of just letting us do our job. But at the 5th, we could do the neck deck. Then you guys have to apply to the ZBA for your variances. You need to be on their agenda for September. They meet the third week of September. And then they would also need, they would set a public hearing for the third week of October. So if we adjourn the public hearing to the second date in October, I'm not sure when that is. I think it might be the.
Third.
The second date.
The second date, which would be the 17th, maybe?
Or Wednesday.
At any rate.
Our meeting?
Uh-huh. 17th. So if we adjourn to the 17th, if there's any submissions or anything you want to do, we'll still have a chance to dialogue with them in a sort of a workshop fashion. We wouldn't have the public hearing up until later. And that would be just the meeting before you're going to get what we would think would be your ZBA variances. Because as I said, we'll hear tonight how the board would like me to write the recommendation letters. And you would come back to us the first meeting in November, where we would then consider approval, assuming that we have all the details worked out through the plans that Liz will be setting forth as well. If that sounds amenable to you, that was kind of the course that Victoria and I thought would be charted, because I feel as though 90 to 95% of this site is done now. I know you guys are saying there's still work in progresses, but it's on materials and some other things that are not, they're big and important to you, but for the, in terms of the planning board, I think we're going to accept whatever you finally come forth with, with colors, et cetera, unless you decide that that bronze goes to neon pink. Just saying.
Don't do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's another project we're working on.
There you go. There you go. So at any rate, that's, that's where my head was in terms of thinking about a timeline. And that way, you would be through us in order to have this minor celebration, groundbreaking, whatever it's going to be, the supervisor and Mr. Sakurai, or Sakurai-san, I guess I shouldn't be saying Mr. Sakurai, it'd be Sakurai-san, I believe, would both put on their hard hats and ceremonially put a shovel on the ground and then we would all have Saki and whatever. So just to keep us on that.
My understanding, that's what they want to do. They have to be in New York on the 14th. So they want to come up here and do that, either on the 12th or the 13th. What's that?
Of November?
Yes.
So we would like to be able to get everybody through. You, as I said, you want to met all your conditions because I don't think you're going to be able to get through Speedies, Department of Health, et cetera. You're both shaking your head, so yes. Okay. Ms. Axelson, pray continue. Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no worries. I asked about the timeline and you explained it, and that's very helpful. So there were a couple of comments that seemed more like discussion items at this point. And it has to do with Town Center historic district standards. So in my last comments, I, I knew that there were benches along the walkway, along Route 9. And I'd asked about having a few benches on the internal walkways. And the other comment that was related to that was, was. And the other comment that was related to that was, was a couple of picnic tables. So in the response letter, the response was, we already did the benches, they're on this sheet, which I understand, and that's wonderful. So I kinda wanna put it to the board. What we have now is the walkway along nine with the three benches spaced nicely apart. Near the Ngawa, I guess there's, there's plenty of seating there. The response was that there would be benches and seating and picnic tables near the building, but they would be removable. In other words, they put them out when they needed to and take them back, rather than place things along the walkways in the site. And if that's acceptable to the board, I don't have to make this comment.
No, I have a question for you. I misread until I took the plans more closely today. When you asked for picnic tables, I thought you meant in this grass paving area, somewhere over and through here.
That's, that is what I.
If I recall correctly, the diorama you kept bringing. I originally showed seating of some sort aside the rice polishing building. I'll also note that it showed, I think, bamboo right in through here.
Actually, it was between the rice polishing building and the brewery building.
Yeah, I, I believe that the client intends to bring tables and chairs out to this clearing area by the stage in amongst the cherry trees as well. So yes, it is not permanent.
Right.
Or heavy, like a, like a picnic table. But they do, they do intend to bring tables and chairs beyond just the Ngawa seating area.
Well, Ed, so, but on, I can find you the sheet in this massive set if you need me to. But you were showing removable or movable tables and chairs in the patio areas too.
Yes. Yes.
They would be, they would be there, by movable, you mean someone could move around on their own if they wanted to.
Correct. Or in inclement weather, wintertime, they, they put them away.
Sort of like patio dining around here.
Like, like a French park.
Yep. And then in through here, you would have additional that maybe would be stored longer, it wouldn't be brought up on, out on special occasions. That's what I'm understanding. Okay.
Correct.
So, so what I'm trying to do is if, if you're satisfied with what's there already, and you don't feel that there's a need for picnic tables and benches in the interior of the site that are permanent, then I can write off that comment.
Well, I'll ask everyone to address that as well.
Does that, does that include the benches along the walkway?
Well, the benches along, there's three benches along Route nine, along that walkway that should stay.
Right, okay. I wanna, I wanna.
They would stay.
Pull that apart.
I was, I was looking, because, because of what we did with the most recent thing we reviewed for Town Center Historic District. The idea was to have plazas and seating areas throughout a site, you know, so that'd be a little bit more inviting. And so I saw this gorgeous landscaped area between the polishing building and the brewery building, thinking that would be perfect, you know, to have a little bit of seating there. So that people might linger and decide, maybe I will go in and buy a bottle of Saki instead of just tasting it, that kind of thing. The idea of the Town Center Historic District is to keep people kind of milling around and enjoying that area.
I just wanna.
So that's why I made the comment, but I don't wanna keep making the comment if the board is satisfied.
Gotcha. Are you looking for additional seating between the rice polishing and the Route nine?
No.
No.
Rice polishing and the building.
There, Liz can.
Are you looking for something more permanent?
What do I need to do? Am I, am I, okay. So, so the idea is, look, there, let's see, there's a bench here.
There's four, right.
Bench here and a bench here. There's three of them along here, nicely spaced.
You weren't thinking there.
So, no, no, that's there, that's fine, that's okay. No changes there, keep it, nice. And the idea was, there are interior walkways in here where people will be, you know, between parking areas, et cetera. It's nicely landscaped, and the idea was, oh, maybe add a little picnic table or a couple benches in here. That was all. And it has to do with the Town Center Historic District Standards.
Then we'll just have each person weigh in when I ask comments about whether they think a bench or something should be added in through here.
But weighing, you know, keeping in mind that the response memo basically said, we are gonna have tables and chairs, but they're not gonna be permanent. They're gonna be put out and taken back.
And not necessarily the location you're suggesting along these interior walkways.
Right.
I think you're specifically pointing this out because it's not that far, but if you have older people who maybe are physically infirm, they may need to sit down a moment, is that it?
Having had an elderly parent who would walk a little way and sit down somewhere, yes. That, that was the concept. And I'm guessing there might be some tour buses here, and it's possible there might be some senior citizens on those, so that's, that's the concept.
If I could make a recommendation, when, when you get off the bus, or you're coming from the parking lot, there's a bike rack here on this side. It might be helpful to have a bench on the other side.
Yes.
Also being.
We could do that.
Also being a tour bus guide. The seniors on those tour, they, they do look from when they get off for the more unstable ones to.
A place to sit down, of course.
It's a great idea, David. Thank you. Okay, continue, please.
Well, you know, that, that was, that was my comment, and I wanted to know.
I think we're gonna get another bench up there.
Whether or not, the board wants that. I don't wanna keep making the comment if it's not something that's desired and if, if the applicant's folks have put together a packet of what would work, you know. So, and yeah, I had thought it would be nice to have some seating further out, but maybe they're going to place that temporarily and then bring it back inside, so.
Thank you. Other items? Other comments?
The rest of what I have is fairly technical, and the only other thing I was gonna say is that when I'm done with this review memo. I'm suggesting, and I, I mentioned this to you, Michael, that an offline, some kind of offline consultation, even if it's just a conference call going over the plans to figure out, how do we get these things addressed? Move forward, okay?
Good. I like to do this in person rather than on the phone. Believe me, it's easier. People are looking, what page are you on? What page? When you have one set of plans in front of you, it's a lot faster. Okay, thank you. I keep thinking there's somebody else I need to call on over there, but there's not. Do we have any other engineering issues? That Pete brought up? Nope.
No, only the wastewater treatment plant comment, which is flux depending on the soils.
And which will get a Speedies permit or not, which means we have to go someplace else. So I really worry about that. Pete doesn't have any stormwater issues, is what I'm trying to say, because there's less impervious, et cetera, et cetera. That's what I've been told all along.
You know what? I don't know that we've issued a SWIP memo yet. We haven't. We still need that. Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to go first. Which end? Let's go, Ms. Weiser.
So regarding picnic tables versus movable outdoor tables and chairs, I think that the movable outdoor tables and chairs would be more in keeping with the feeling of, of the site. So that you can, you know, place in more intimate little settings rather than those kind of hulking picnic tables. Back to overall, I would just like to reiterate my feeling that the fenestration of the main building is sufficiently broken up by the visual exposure to the interior, which gives us a clearer into the, into the various rooms. It's also broken up by the columns that support the Ngawa as well. I also think that dividing the front yard into separate yards and subsequent landscaping provides yet another interesting visual articulation of the space. And while I understand the need to reduce total signage, I will miss the sign on the rice polishing building. It was a tasteful graphic element that broke up the repetitive lines of the building, and I'm really glad that we may see its return. Thank you.
Told ya.
Mr. Pickett?
Yes, one, agree with the moving of the wastewater treatment, if it's, if it's possible, like that idea. Agreed with the changes and potential on the signage. Agree with Ann with regards to the movable chairs, movable benches, whatever. I think it'll look cleaner during wintertime when it's not being used. And you've got some flexibility, you know, during the normal months. The rice polishing building, agree with their, with this signage. I've always kind of had a focus on that thing, this, again, it's the first thing you see. And it just doesn't wanna look like a barn, or I, I realize it's Japanese modern and whatever. But again, first thing you see, and anything to make it a good identifier, I think helps it. The other was electrical vehicle charging a parking. Any thought about?
There is one here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's shown.
Great, okay. Thank you. I like it. I really like it.
I forgot to ask both of you to weigh in on whether we might make a positive recommendation for variances for the signs as well as for incursion to the stream corridor.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
So I'm gonna start by saying that when I got your submission and I was reading through, I was getting really depressed. And I was just like, wow, they, they didn't listen. They didn't. When it came to the articulation of the building and I got to, it said, oh, this is addressed in the July 18th planning board hearing comments. And I'm looking and I'm, and I read all the way through it, and I didn't see it, and then I read something else and it said, addressed above in the planning board hearing comments. And I looked and it wasn't there, and I'm like, oh, well, they didn't, they didn't hear us. So, but then I get here tonight and you do a presentation and you show, I still don't have the elevation, but in my head. I can, I can see that you, you heard. And it sounds like you have, you took exactly what I was asking to try to accomplish the articulation through other means. And so I can't wait to see an elevation, because in my head, this is like, this is really cool. And I know that, I, I know when I see it, it's gonna be even better than this top-down. So I really appreciate that. But I was really, I was really disappointed when I read through the memo. I was like, no. Cause all I saw on the, on the plans were these two little square things.
The new patios?
The two little patios, or two little square drawings. I'm like, what is that? What is that? That's.
I think, I think Mark and I have always understood that Jun Mitsuhi's, you know, his attitude towards mitigating the, the bulk of the existing grocery store. Primarily is through the use of landscape.
Yes, and, and you met that. I would just, I was just, I was wowed. So, thank you. And the materials that you showed, I'm, I'm fine with all of them. I do like the idea of you going back and, and maybe making a case for the rice polishing building. But if you didn't, you know what?
We'll try.
I don't think it's gonna make that big of a deal, cause no one's going, gonna go up and look to see if there's actual grain or something. It's, it's on a.
I will too, well.
There's always one. There's always that one. I must say I did also like the sign on the rice building.
She didn't tell me. I have to say, coming into tonight, that is the one thing that I would never guess would come up as, please put it back.
She didn't even mention it to me, and I, but I heard from enough people that I thought, this is gonna be a recurring motif tonight, and it is.
An identifier.
Yeah, I, I do like that. I also would support a, a recommendation for the move, the movement of the wastewater treatment plant to within that buffer area. I think that should be favorably looked upon as well as a signage. And then to Liz's point about seating and stuff. I think in the big area around the stage between the rice polishing and the brewery, no, I'm good. That you're, you're fine doing what you're describing, but that you may wanna add a bench on the east side of that walkway to the, there you go.
Under a tree.
Under a tree somewhere that just, it's just a bench that if I'm.
On the way out to the rice polishing building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that would be permanent. That, you know, if I'm, if I'm getting off the bus and I've just sat and I'm gonna do something, and they're like, okay, so we're gonna start in the rice polishing building, and you're looking at going, oh, good, there's a bench, we can go. Cause I can stop and sit on the way.
Yep.
Consider it done.
But I do like the idea of the movable furniture and all that other stuff. I think it'll be, it'll be a great outdoor space, because you can populate it as you want.
Yeah, that's a good way to describe it. Very much so.
And that's it.
Just a silly question. Is there room inside the factory, since you did value engineering? Is there, and most of the changes were inside, is there room for storage of the, of the furniture?
I, you know, honestly, that was, I had that thought while I was sitting here, that that's more than likely where they will store. I don't know if there is room or not, but. I think that's probably where they'll end up storing tables and chairs. Yeah.
I believe I heard that there's storage in the mezzanine?
There's storage on the, there's storage on the mezzanine currently. It's, it's a small room.
I think the most convenient place would be in rice polishing. That's certainly more.
Having just watched a video of, of, with Mr. Sakurai at the factory, the rice polishing building's pretty tight.
And this one is tight too.
Just think about it in terms of where you might wanna put it, because given the fact that, again, the owner seems to be really wanting to celebrate and be a good community partner. If he needs a lot of furniture, you just make, make sure you know where it's being stored, because any structure needs to be shown, because Ms. Moss wants to know where they are, to make sure you get your COs.
Good point.
Yeah, if you need a storage shed, know now.
Yeah, okay, good point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great comments.
We'll certainly mention that.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
So I, I am also in support of the variances for the wastewater treatment plant being moved to the north end along with the signage. Just some clarification on the benches. Is there a fourth bench on the south side, on the other sidewalk there, near St. Andrews?
This here is signage.
Okay.
That is, that's signage location B, so that is this sign here.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you.
There's one, two, three benches on, on this drawing, and we've just added two more.
Perfect. And again, I've, I've been in support of this project. I like the reuse of the property and, and bringing the business to Hyde Park, and never wanna say anything negative about that. But I, I am very disappointed after reading the response like Ann was. And I, I just, I do like the building. I like the architecture. I understand the direction that you're trying to go in. I understand all that. But to sit on this board and represent our town and not be given some alternative conceptual designs that do adhere to what our code wants us to do. It, it's really tough for me. I mean, we've been up here and asked other applicants to go through, you know, months of redesign and different conceptual drawings. And, and I don't believe I've seen one other than this, so. I mean, again, it's, it's very difficult for me to say that, because I do like the project, I like the building. I just feel like it, it's a, a lack of effort. Thank you.
And again, that relates to not having an elevation that shows how this would incorporate and make the changes. I also wanna make note, I forgot to sort of underscore that Ms. Weiser's first comment were that, to her, the, I guess we'll call it the Ngawa, so that you have that inner, outer meeting. The fenestration, the columns, in and of itself, could be viewed as having broken up the mass sufficiently. So to her, it did. So, and again, I think that not everybody was there yet. I can certainly, I could follow that argument, but I wanna see the, I wanna reserve sort of judgment to see the elevation, how it changes once you incorporate these really green spaces as part of the building itself. As you said.
Sure.
If Mr. Mitsuhi believes that some of the mitigation is the landscaping, and I know it's a great job of landscaping, but to see now these changes and how they would look as part of a building, what I think has stopped some of this for us as well. I had a hard time for a second going, where are the elevations? Where's the changes? Look at the very front cover sheet, it hasn't changed at all. And it's the same old happy people walking with very little, you know, landscaping and grasses, and that's completely changed, so, anyway.
Michael, I, I can agree with you 100%, and I, I just, my thought was, I understand how all those elements break it up. We've only seen one.
One version, that's it.
One concept, and that's, just for me, that's, that's hard, despite how much I do love the project and the building.
Yeah, we, we should add that for the hotel project across from the CIA, where they actually started breaking ground for minimal grading. That was a lot of work for us, for architecture, because they didn't know what, what they wanted, we didn't know what we wanted. And again, same concept, more than 100 feet, they really had to break it up. They broke it up a lot at the very beginning, cause they got that.
Too much.
Too much. Architecture is not anything that's easy for us, you can imagine. We try to look at what we think are the significant buildings around town and what'll match. I mean, we have a variety of styles involved here, from Second Empire to Queen Anne, Victorian, to dull, soulless and modern, i.e. this building, strip mall. So, but we try to, we've been really working assiduously since, all of us, for the last over 10 years. We've been really working assiduously since, all of us, for the last over 10 years, trying to make sure that building design now is more compatible with what we... where we wanna see that go. Our comprehensive plan calls for us to really create a sense of place that maybe Hyde Park didn't have, people used to come in and go, well, where's Hyde Park? We're trying to correct that, I think this is an essential step toward it because this is gonna be a different kind of architecture than we have anyplace else and through here. But it's not... My goal always, and I think my colleagues, is to make sure it's not, I can use this term loosely, tacky, in other words, we don't want it to look like some silly Japanese restaurant that goes for, you know, arcane styles, and I think you guys have made that abundantly clear throughout that you're taking an existing store and really repurposing it, not just with the use, but with the look, the functionality of it. So, I think it'll be better for us, again, to evaluate an elevation that we can see what changes this really brings about through the landscaping.
We hear you, we understand that those drawings are important.
Good, thank you. Ms. DeNapoli, additional comments?
I agree with most of the stuff that has been so far mentioned. I definitely understand Mr. Oliver's concern, because I also was under the impression that we had strongly suggested a second set of drawings, and we had said that...
Concepts.
Concepts, it was gonna be...
Onion skin paper?
Onion skin paper, we were not asking for something formal, and we had discussed that, so when I did receive this, I was surprised that that was not there. I also agree, it is not fair to everyone that has come before you that we had said, you must present us with an alternative because you do not meet the requirements. So, I think it needs to be sent back to Japan, and I also agree totally, part of the issue is that we do love this building, it's a stunning building, I think it keeps getting better and better, but that does not take away your obligation by any stretch of the imagination. I will add my voice to the sign for the rice building. And I agree. I was so disappointed when it came down, because I think it makes a very interesting comment and statement as you enter and you see, and especially against the white and the black, it's a strong but very simple statement, and if there could be funds found, that would be great. I also agree with the moving of the septic system, and I'm glad you've added the two extra benches along the way.
We'll be adding, we'll be adding.
That will be, yeah. Because I was looking at that, once I understood the exact area, those are important just to make sure that they're out of the way of the moving tables and chairs, so that if someone was to just sit after the tables and chairs have been taken in, or just as additional seating would be great. I look forward to seeing the elevations, and I do hope we can see another rendition.
Thank you. Thank you. You can see the board's passionate about evaluating the exterior, I suggested. I also... So, for me, a couple of... This is a minor detail, but in the landscaping plan, at the top of the... And I don't... Didn't write down the page, I apologize, but there's a... Right in... Whoops. In through this area, it's referred to Mix 3, but on the top of the legend, there's only a Mix 1 and Mix 2 referred to, there's never such a thing, no such thing as Mix 3.
Okay.
Mix 1 are all the rough plantings, I think they're called, in through here, Mix 2 is this grouping in through here, which I believe is sumac, tiarella or foam flower, and I'm forgetting the third, we all remember, but there's a label that says Mix 3 in through here, and there's the legend up top, there's no such... It doesn't list... There's no Mix 3, there's Mix 1, 2 and 5.
Okay.
Somehow got dropped off, and if there's a Mix 4, then I don't know where that would go at all, because this is never referenced. Just saying. Almost everything I've already been through, one of the responses to Ms. Axelson's initial response or last comment letter was that you were looking at the types of bollards that would be used, and it's just my opinion that if you can match up with these bollards, I think it would look better.
That's our intention.
And because they're also utilized across the street at Hyde Park Mall.
That has been recently confirmed that we're gonna be using this.
Thank you. I just think, again, it'll help create that sense of place. Thank you for finally telling us what the Ngawa is, because the response... Your response back was that Sheets A 301 through 2, 311 and 321 now list all colors and materials, but the Ngawa just still says Ngawa canopy, no color and no materials whatsoever, so that should probably be changed to reflect that it's going to be lead-coated copper, I believe, and...
Gray metal, it'll be painted steel.
Gray metal.
Painted steel, gray metal. Then, last, this isn't probably so much you, but neither was the landscaping issue, but Victoria and I had a long meeting with DOT. Just in general, and if you ever do any projects in New York, you'll discover this, now, it's their position based on some obscure regulation that I disagree with as well. The regulation says that if there's any disturbance when the public right-of-way, then you have to follow certain... It triggers certain things. There is no disturbance from your sidewalk in the public right-of-way, it's not public right-of-way. The DOT response said, we're going to trust you to ensure that this is open to the public at all times, and Mr. Zarens, your response was that we'll be happy to give an easement to the town for public access, which is great. At another site, and this is the Associated Golf Cards, they first asked for dedication of land, which we explained, and they were initially discussing this, that they wanted this land dedicated to DOT. Fun times. We pointed out that that would, A, be a regulatory taking and exaction, and they said, no, no condemnation, no taking, because of course he knows what that language means. I said, well, then how else do you... How else do you see this, how would you justify it? Because we'd have to do a subdivision. No, you don't, no towns do that, and I said, a condemnation supersedes subdivision, so it could happen that way. No condemnation, no taking! I said, well, for you to take possession to get a deed, you have to have meets and bounds, that requires subdivision. That also changes, in every case, this would change, front, setbacks, because this would now be the front...
Oh, my God.
So, I had a meltdown, you guys have seen me do this before. I confess to the supervisor and everybody else, I use curse language, I never do that, it was very unprofessional of me, but I don't understand how DOT is doing this, but basically, at the end of the meeting, Victoria and I agreed, a lot of this is, they're protecting themselves, it really has to do with ADA compliance. They're wanting to make sure that any sidewalk that ties into their sidewalk system, which, please note, this does not, not as of yet, this ties into a public access to the south that's on the land owned by the town of Hyde Park, not DOT right-of-way. And if we ask for this sidewalk to be in DOT right-of-way, it would be between the stone wall and Route 9, which down here, there's plenty of room for it, but up here, there's no... Unsafe! So, at any rate, I like the response that you gave to DOT, I don't know where you're gonna go with it exactly, because... I basically hit my head against the wall, because their highway design manual does say in it that for any permitted project, that regardless of funding, federal or state, and note, it doesn't say private, that many of these things must be adhered to. They're using the highway design manual to kind of justify where and how sidewalks should connect, where crosswalks should be, at any rate, they're using that to say, I believe that there needs to be a pedestrian landing both here and here and here, or there and there, one of the three, I couldn't quite figure it out.
And pedestrian poles at all three of those.
And pedestrian poles at all three, this seems like an undue burden on the applicant.
Yeah, so we... I think our response speaks to that, just saying that we would hope that we would be able to share those costs with, you know, the landowners at each of those intersections.
We cannot require off-site improvements unless it's under seeker, but the problem is, is that if anybody from DOT is watching, I'll probably be strung up tomorrow to die. But DOT is putting a lot of burden on one applicant. At this point, there's no pedestrian studies, there's nothing to prove that this would be utilized to cross those areas yet, I think they will be because of CIA students possibly coming up to maybe do something here, but that just seems like an incredible burden. The problem is, is that in talking to a couple of other consultants for... Who sit on your side of the table, they tell me that recently for two of their projects, they dedicated the land to DOT, where the sidewalk wasn't in there, they adhered to all that DOT wanted to do. They said, how'd they make you do it? They wouldn't give us a permit otherwise. That's fairly substantial, I can see how they could do it, but in this instance, there is no DOT work permit required, unless it's to do the pedestrian landing out here. That's a DOT work permit, but otherwise, nothing that you're doing otherwise unless... In other words, if we said, we're only gonna require a sidewalk to here, and then it would be used internally, as I read it, they don't really have any power to control, so I want you to sort of think about what might happen if we don't, if you can't get your way with DOT, because I'm willing to go to the mat in terms of elected officials, but the DOT is a dark, impenetrable mass. Just to get the meeting, it took two weeks to discuss, and I said all along, I don't wanna discuss just Associated Golf Cards, because I'd received this letter that was similar in here about guaranteeing public access, and when I got there, with Victoria, they said, we didn't know that you were bringing your attorney, you set up the meeting, Victoria's copied on each one. Well, I know she was your attorney. Yes, you do. Well, we need to get our legal department, please go ahead, I'll be happy to wait. They couldn't get legal, so, because then they said, what's the purpose of the meeting? And I said, to discuss your ongoing policy and what legal justification you have for what I'm... A regulatory taking a condemnation! So, that didn't set the meeting to go well for a while, at any rate, we solved associates, I think.
Oh, good.
This one, I more or less threatened to remove all the sidewalk, et cetera, completely, even though I think that it adds value to your site to be able to connect with the rest of the town, particularly if you want some of the public to help celebrate, they could park in other locations and walk all the way over here if they wanted to, but I don't see how we ourselves require the off-site improvement. I only... I just... Go ahead, Mr. Messenger, can you... Microphone?
If you wanted to play hardball, we could end the sidewalk at the right-of-way, and there would be a dirt path between the end of the sidewalk and the crossing.
I'm just... This really upset me, because we're an already developed community, this community first was developed in the 1700s and then became, you know, English later on in the 1800s. We're gonna have sites where DOT right-of-way is not going to be sufficient for sidewalks, so I guess I'm telling you this because you may do other work in New York, you will definitely be doing other work in New York, and they say this is not a new policy.
Huh.
Yeah.
I will note, as I pointed out to them, the sidewalk, more or less their policy of... Because I said, well, what about the sidewalks that lead perpendicular? They're still leading into your system. Oh, no, those are fine! So, if it's parallel, which this is sort of parallel to Route 9, I said, then why didn't you ask us for the sidewalks to be dedicated that are at Hyde Park Mall, i.e. where Stop &amp; Shop is? That runs perfectly parallel to Route 9, it's on the inside of the stone wall because there was no room for the outside of the stone wall to create the sidewalk.
And there was no mention of this.
Not a single bit. Well, that was our policy, must not have caught it. Okay, so at any rate, this is to be ongoing, but I appreciate your response, I wish you luck, if there's anything I can personally help do to resolve this, let me know. Supervisor, the Senator, Assemblymember Barrett, Congressman Faso, I don't care who it takes, just let us know, because this needs to be resolved. And again, apparently they've been sued, DOT's been sued for, I guess some attorneys going out and basically showing where there might be non-ADA compliance and suing DOT. And so, even if it connects into their system, they wanna make sure that they have a way to repair the sidewalks, which is nice, that's great. I said, what about... Last but not least, to give land to DOT requires it to be reviewed by the AG as well as their own titles, et cetera? It takes a minimum of nine months. That policy should be called Kill Development Everywhere, then. So, what we've done at Associated and what we're gonna propose here is that if they really want the easement assigned to DOT so they can come in and repair that portion of the sidewalks that tears into theirs, which would be great, because you and your clients want it up to, what about giving the... An assignable easement to the town so that we know that it's for the public benefit, and then we can assign that easement on, not lease, easement, assign that easement on to DOT, if that's what they really want, that's why it doesn't stop you from being able to move forward, because that would be a condition. So, again, this is all on the side, we'll work it out, I just wanted to let you know that, again, I appreciated your response, and we've gotta figure this out.
Sorry.
Yes.
In the whole discussion about how we made other similar projects do, you know, other architectural designs and mention of mezzanine, it reminded me that the mezzanine area should be put in your existing and proposed scale, because it is gross floor. It doesn't... And it doesn't... Oh, it is already in there? Okay, fine.
He's got it.
He's got it.
You know me, microphone, I've been trained well, finally, can you say that out loud?
The 58176 number includes the mezzanine.
Thank you, I believe we discussed that way back when, too, so. Now, let me go into when we want to adjourn this public hearing, too, is it acceptable for you guys for us to move it to October 17th, and then if you wanna workshop items, i.e. the request for... I shouldn't be looking at Mr. Tabor, I believe, but I can look at anybody.
Look them all.
Whoever you'd like to take this answer.
October 17th, I think we were thinking October 3rd, October 17th is great.
I can also do October 3rd, it's up to you guys.
No, October 17th is good, and then we'll hopefully do... We can still do it, we can do an egg deck in a workshop session, and that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so, no other comments? We get a motion to adjourn this to October 17th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
I was gonna say...
September 5th workshop.
September 5th workshop?
That assumes that you... Well, we'll be coming back for an egg deck, but we will hope that you'll also have an application and for...
Right.
Yeah, the sign...
For the ZBA.
And what is the deadline? Do we have a submission deadline for that?
For ZBA?
For the 9... For your 9:5 workshop?
For our September 5th, it would be two weeks before September 5th. August 21st, so I thought about a week from today.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say. What's the deadline for the elevation and so on?
Next Tuesday.
If you don't... No, 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 that's not for the elevations, this is for the sign request.
Okay, that was my question, but I mean, for the additional information you folks want.
If you... If you... Whenever you can get the elevations to us, you can.
Okay.
This is in process, I mean, if you're gonna show them the day before, don't expect... The night of, don't expect a lot of comment, because I don't allow it.
We'll get them done as quickly as possible.
I don't allow people to comment on stuff that they're just brand new, they're seeing brand new, because it's come back to haunt us.
Okay, that was a good question, okay.
But, you know, you can see it's a cooperative board, we really wanna work with you on this to get... Make this happen. I hope you convey that to Japan as well, because this is exciting. I was worried this Hulk of a store was gonna sit there empty for...
Ever.
Yeah, who knows how long? There were 47 uses that were restricted from it becoming, and the county worked with the...
They never thought of Saki Brewery.
They didn't think of Saki Brewery. That's why it worked out. There was a restriction on food service being... Food or beverage service, but that got lifted, so the purchase could be made, so, anyway.
Can I ask how they're doing in Japan with the recovery from the storm?
That's a good question, we haven't heard much recently. The... What's that?
They had a typhoon.
Yeah, we'll find out and send something along.
They also got hit by a typhoon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that that affected them in the mountains.
This particular company, Asahi Shuza, is donating a portion of every sale of every bottle, I assume you know that, of Saki that's produced, to victim relief efforts.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I think they're trying to get their wastewater treatment plant up and running, that's the thing that was knocked out by the flood.
Yep, yep.
Which means, no production for, I think it was two to three months.
That's right.
And plus the rice, right? The rice got wet.
We wish them well, as always, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next time on the agenda is continued public hearing for Salt Point Solar, the applicants are seeking approval for a solar farm, special use permit with a site plant at 525 Salt Point Turnpike. We get a motion to review the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, the applicants are not here this evening because we're waiting for the response for AKRF before we can really take any further action. Remember, this is occasioned by the applicants, we gave it an egg deck, but then they did some additional communicating with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, even though the DEC Resource Mappers showed no endangered threat to rare species, the Fish and Wildlife DEC resource mapper showed no endangered threatened rare species, the Fish and Wildlife Service shows, well, Dutchess County can have all of these, so they followed a more broad and certainly more, more protective attitude that way. So AKRF is in the process of reviewing this, we anticipate comments tomorrow. I did have a question today from their reviewer, Chad. Liz and I tried to respond, it wasn't easy, because what he's looking at is actually what we don't have. The report we received was redacted, and so they sent it
I thought they
Unredacted, they sent an unredacted report, but I haven't gone through it yet.
Oh, right, okay.
And so he was asking about the area of disturbance, whether there'd be trees taken out to the west of where the cleared area is, currently cleared areas, and I said, "Absolutely, that's, there's 11 more acres beyond what's currently cleared, there's 11 more acres that'll be," I think the total disturbance is about 26 or 27 acres, where the, where the arrays will be, and the paths around them. So they have about 15 now, 11 more will be removed. I said, "That is in the area," because he was concerned that there were no surveys done in the area specifically to the west.
He said it almost looked as if they had done the surveys into the areas that had already
Been cleared.
Had, that actually had no trees.
And so if they disagree with the acoustic survey, this, we will need to re, have it redone.
Oh, right, right.
And we will have to change the methodology, unless U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service overrules and says, "No, it was done just fine."
Correctly.
So we may not be, in other words, I was thinking that Rayala Lee and this one might track for the same special meeting, but given the comment, I don't think so. So, and as Cynthia pointed out, they're still having to talk to the town board, likely conditions will be in agreement with the pilot and in agreement over the decommissioning, so if they can meet with them before September 5th and get, knock those conditions off, that's two less that they'll have to fulfill.
Right.
So would there be any public comment tonight to an empty room?
[laughing]
Additional comments from you, Ms. Axelson?
Just that I'm going to pick up the, you know, submittal and go through it as quickly as I can.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
No.
Did you have a chance to see the sign that, oh, do we have, we don't have the paper copies yet. Did anyone follow the link they sent today? The sign they're going to do for the
For Peachill?
For Peachill Park is really cool, I got to tell you.
Good.
It is, no, 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 it is, it's, it's a Dropbox, it's so big, if you go to the Dropbox link, it's all in your emails. I, yes, since I devote all my afternoon, or most of the day to this.
Right.
I went ahead and looked at it, went down the rabbit hole, but the sign's really, really cool. It's, it's both designed to appeal to kids, it says, "Can you find the solar array farm?"
Oh.
And then it shows little solar arrays hidden between the trees, just from that, that thing. But then it has these happy graphics about what this will do for you, that's aimed for kids, and then it has an adult narrative as well
Okay.
About what the value of this is, so that it's going to appeal to sort of all ages. It's attractively designed. I was, I got really excited by it. They, they took it seriously, and they're going to do a good job with it, I think.
Oh, that's awesome.
So when you get it, when you get a moment, you'll see it, but we're going to get paper copies, I think, tomorrow, so you'll be able to
I mean, I had been in my email, I just, I somehow missed that. Me, too.
Well, the Dropbox is, the megabytes are huge, so
Well, that's what Saki Brewery had done also.
Yes, so there's like, there's like nine or 10 items, and the very last one is the sign, if you click on that first, you'll be happy. So there being no public comment, no additional comments from the board, make it a motion to adjourn this to September 5th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
The next item on the agenda is Wright Homes Resubdivision. Patrick, since you're here, it appears to me that if you've been, I don't know if you're following this, or if you're part of it, but Victoria and the attorney, I think, have worked out almost everything, it just has to be filed now or something with the town?
Oh, were you referring to the extension?
The Wright Homes, to extend it, I mean, we're going to extend it, but it looks as though they may not need it, but they're doing it out of an abundance of caution?
I think we are hopeful that they will not need it.
Okay.
I think it just comes down to getting it filed. If I recall, the condition
Can you talk into the mic?
Oh, yes, sorry.
If I recall, the condition only spoke of approval as to form and substance, not necessarily filing, but I think filing would definitely be the safest thing to do before.
Since it wasn't filed last time?
Well, yeah.
I think so, too.
No, I just meant in terms of whether or not an extension
Okay.
Was needed.
Okay.
But I believe we've signed off on that. There were some final changes that I believe were amenable to the applicant, so hopefully that's all resolved.
Okay.
And we have final maps.
No, I know, we don't, so we have to extend it, but they could get that, but they're, well, at any rate, so this would be their second and final 90-day extension, so who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution granting extension of time to satisfy the conditions of the final plat approval, Wright Homes Resubdivision Resolution Number 16-46D, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grants the applicant a second 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of final plat approval to December 3, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Ms. Weiser is recused from the next application because she is the applicant. This is for Kupnik Weiser, it's a site plan waiver request, is to add roof-mounted solar panels, similar to the, is it Smiley?
Yeah.
Smiley application we had at the last meeting. It's the same company, it's the Tesla design, they're more like shingles than they are actual panels. And we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, these will be visible from the river, if you have a, if you're on the river, and have really good binoculars, otherwise they won't, you wouldn't even notice, because they're going to look just like they're wearing their roof line, yeah. So who has this, or any questions?
No.
Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Neil Kupnik and Reisner, 19 scenic drive site plan waiver, Resolution 2018-52, whereas a request for site plan waivers been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Neil Kupnik, to install roof-mounted photo voltaic panels on the existing single-family home, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved, that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the Planning Board Department on July 16, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, welcome back, Ms. Weiser, and congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request for DMF and CJF Holdings. This is for a rear dormer addition in the historic overlay district, or the statewide area, scenic area statewide significance, at 12th Floor Lane. The site will not be visible from either of the historic sites or the river, and actually it looks pretty attractive, and as it so happens, Ms. Whitman's father faces the rear, thank you, Patrick, goodnight, faces the rear of this, and has no objections. So, and we have the recommendation from the zoning administrator, who has this file?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, DMF and CJF Holdings LLC, 6065-20858012, 12th Floor Lane, site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, August 15, 2018, Resolution Number 2018-54. Whereas a site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by DMF and CJF Holdings for a rear dormer addition associated with a single-family home requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be resolved, that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department July 17, 2018, and per the request to the Planning Board dated August 3, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is a site plan waiver for Daniel Pool, this is located at 15 Rogers Place, it's also in the scenic area statewide significance. This actually is an existing pool and pool house
Yep.
That's been there a long time, and I appreciate everyone letting it, or putting this on the, this agenda quickly, because the house is actually about to sell, and no one somehow noticed in their due diligence until the very last moment that this doesn't have a CO.
CO.
It happens.
It does happen.
It does happen.
Exactly right. And again, this is actually not, you cannot see this from either of the two historic sites or the river. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you, Ann.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Daniel Pool, 15 Rogers Place, Site Plan Waiver, Resolution Number 2018-55. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Daniel Pool on August 9, 2018, for property located at 15 Rogers Place in the Town of Hyde Park, and whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled Pool regarding the specific request as submitted August 9, 2018, and in the building permit application filed dated August 1, 2018.
Is there a second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and I can guarantee they're going to be very happy that we did this tonight, because you don't want to hold up a closing. The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing me to execute a contract with Clark Patterson Lee, as you know from our last meeting, Morris Associates, as of September 4th, will become Clark Patterson Lee. Clark Patterson Lee will be, I can't think of the name of it, but it's, it's an, it's an agreement that basically says that whatever Morris Associates has been doing, they will fill to the end of the year. But in the meantime, I have to sign something with Clark Patterson Lee, because that's the name of the new company.
Yep.
All the rates are staying the same, et cetera, et cetera, and
Same work, same people.
Same everything.
Same rates.
Although, as I said at the last meeting, what's nice is you do have some more services now offered, actually.
Oh, yeah, they're huge, sure.
Like, we could begin the environmental review for the acoustic bad survey done by Clark Patterson Lee, now that you have all these more, more people.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
I think you have an envi, I think you have an environmental specialist.
I think there is an environment, not that many planners, so I'm still going to be very busy. Which makes me very happy.
Of course. So am I the one who has the actual resolution?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing Planning Board Chairperson to execute an agreement with Clark Patterson Lee for engineering planning services to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, August 15, 2018, Resolution 18-H, whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby authorizes its Chairperson to execute an agreement with Clark Patterson Lee in a form and substance acceptable to the Attorney to the Town and the Town Comptroller for providing for performance of the professional engineering and planning responsibilities of Morris Associates in accordance with its current engineering services agreement through December 31, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the last item on the agenda tonight is, as the Comptroller noticed
Yes.
That we do not have a 2018 agreement with AKRF.
Which we have to remember to do annually, correct? And we somehow forgot.
Quick question, Michael?
Uh huh.
With the Clark Patterson Lee, would it, would there be overlapping services with new, that they're extended?
So what it, so there, there could be overlapping services, but it would be up to us to choose which one we would want to choose.
Okay.
That's basically it. And the, the notes that they're not the only consultant, the contract, the services contract just lists ours, and notes that this is what they can provide, but it would be like if we, like one year, when Ann and I were first on, we had two traffic consultants.
Yep.
The first one we decided we didn't like, so hired another, even though both were for, for all throughout the year.
And then we didn't like them either.
And we didn't like them either, but we did use them for a while. So, hold on.
Hello, everybody.
So this is just done by motion, this is just done by motion, right?
Yeah.
Make it a motion to authorize me to sign the contract with AKRF for, for environmental review services through December 31, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ann, any new business or old?
Nope.
I'm sorry, went on my diatribe about DOT, but I'm a little worried about this for the future.
No, I didn't, I didn't know about that, I mean, I saw this stuff where Associates
Pretty scary.
But I didn't, I was like, what are, what are they talking about?
Yeah.
And to hear what you heard from them.
And somehow to get a dedication of land didn't need subdivision, like, unless you get an easement, if that's acceptable, they're like, "We prefer the dedication," like, that requires subdivision. That changes frontline, you have setbacks. No, it doesn't require subdivision. Yes, it does, because it's a meets and bound deed you're getting. So, like I said, they're nice people, I enjoyed working with them, and they, I got to tell you, by the end, they were super accommodating for Associates, so it was nice.
Okay, all right.
But it was a two-hour meeting to get them to give those
Redemption.
Little inches, those little inches that they gave, so
Wow.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you for televising this.
And loving the six o'clock star.
Love it.
It's only eight.